Thank you.
I think my personal opinion is, in the past, when we've had requests for waivers, we haven't granted them, and I think in this situation, unfortunately, the impact fees are for school, for recreation, for water, and for sewer, and you will have an impact on all of those infrastructures. So I'm sympathetic to what you're requesting, but at the same time, I feel somewhat apprehensive to do such because, in the past, we have been very strict about that, and I think that if we start waiving impact fees where there are, in fact, impacts, we get ourselves into a ball of wax that we don't want to see. I think, in the past, we have made some exceptions where there weren't school-age children or impacts that the impact fees address, but that's my opinion. Anyone else from the board?
I have a question. When was the original building put up? And when the original building was put up, was there an impact fee assessed then?
No, we did not have impact fee legislation in effect at that time, so the property has not paid any impact fees to date.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion? I move that we do not reconsider the impact fees and that they be enforced as is typical with the other applications that we have. I think that's... Yes, sir.
There is a different situation than other applications, like it's not... The other application may be for renting to other people. This is the property owned by us, and we just... It's just basically who operates the store has to go in as a manager. It's not going to rent out to anybody. So, I mean, I put a clause in there that if we rented to anybody to accept manager, then you can always charge them. We are always subject to pay the impact fees.
Right, and I understand what you're saying. I think that the thing is that the impact fees are to help address the idea that when we build infrastructure in town, we need to be able to pay for it. As we see developments go in that have impacts to those infrastructures, we want to try to recoup some of those costs. This is a direct way to do that, and thus, you know, you're in a situation where you are going to use town water, town sewer, possibly the school, and more than likely recreation facilities. So I think that, you know, in this case, it's fitting that the impact fees be in place.
But as we required, like, the impact fees are for those people who have changed their plan or something like that. We did not change any wall or never did anything. I just want to get in myself to the apartment upstairs. There is no change in environment, no change in nothing. When she was there, there was the same thing, just I want... She just took, get out, and I just want to get in. There was nothing changed. And also Charlie himself is like, his wife is 55-plus, so there also a clause in the waiver of impact fees that if anybody rents on 55 or between senior citizens, it can be waived. So if, I mean, if I have to do, I have... I will do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm understanding what you're saying, and I'm sympathetic to it, but I'm not sure that... I think it sets a poor precedent for us, and if the others want to disagree with me, that's fine, but that's my personal opinion.
My only thought is that there was an office up there, they were already using water, they were already using the sewer system and so on, recognizing that there wasn't the impact fee regulations at the time it was constructed. I think that we might consider that side of it also.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring to the board's information... attention for information purposes that, under paragraph six of the waiver section for impact fees, it indicates that a person may request a waiver for impact fees for construction within a plat or site plan approved by the planning board prior to the effective date of this section. Prior to granting such waiver, the board must find that the proposed construction is entitled to the four-year exemption of vested status provided under the state RSAs. The waiver shall not be applicable to phases... subsequent phases of a phase development where active and substantial development has occurred. Building and construction has not yet occurred in the phase in which the construction is proposed. One way of looking this, and I think Mrs. Rosa was asking, what was the status of the construction, when this impact fee ordinance went into effect? And certainly, the building was there, the footprint was there. It was what we've experienced is merely a change in use on the third floor. One could argue that the property is vested because substantial and active development of that site already occurred, and because it occurred prior to the change in the ordinance that the current... the property owner at that time was vested from any subsequent changes in the zoning ordinance, and one could argue that it would be perhaps inappropriate for us to require the impact fee for this new use because it merely is a change in use and not new development of the site. So I'm just presenting that as information for the board to consider as you deliberate.
All right. George?
What are the... Does anybody know what the amount of the impact fees are?
It's $4,153, and it's for a single townhouse category, single-family unit townhouse category.
Is there any other questions? There's still a motion on the floor if there... anyone wants to second it, or we can let the motion die and make a new motion. Can we let a motion die, or do we...
If there's no second, then there's no motion. It doesn't carry.
All right. With that, I would say the motion is dead. Would someone else like to make a motion?
I'd move that we waive the impact fees on this applicant.
Okay. There's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Janice? Is there any other discussion by the board?
Yes.
Chet?
Quick question. If, under his circumstances, he says he'll come back for a waiver if someone else were to move in there, if he was to basically advertise it as a for-rent situation, well, we're going to waive the fees now, would that come into play later on, that we could assess the fees at that point, or...
I think it would have to be clearly stated in the record of the planning board, and that information would have to be conveyed to the building inspector, and perhaps there should be some kind of a notice filed with the register of deeds to assure compliance so that, you know, in the event that Mr. Partel sells the property and there's a new owner, that people would be on record.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that property currently for sale?
No. I had a rumor, but it's not my aware of. I'm just operating in the property. I'm just operating the store, and my knowledge, there is no sale. I have heard the rumor, I keep saying, we advertise for the space and the business area, like in the store area. We have thousand square feet of space we wanted to rent. It might be because of them, or it might be because of the previous owner wanted to sell it, and it still is stayed to the realtors. So it's not in my knowledge that we do want to sell. We are in very good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
George, did you have a question?
No, I think Chet did.
Chet did, sorry.
You and your daughter's going to be there at the apartment, you said?
Yes.
And she's 18 months old?
18 months old.
Is there any other questions? Comments? All right. Peter?
I do have a question. Would we have a motion that brought up Diane and the pre-existing use of the building prior to the near factors? And the change of use not being... Do we have any real reason to go in and put a condition on this if it's just going to be a change from a volume unit to a rental unit? Is that a change?
I guess it depends on how you define development, and I believe our ordinance does view development, a change of use or occupancy, as development under the conditions of the law.
All right. Other questions? Comments? Would that... All of those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Those who abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, bud. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the acceptance and consideration of a minor subdivision application, including lot consolidation and revised condominium site plan for Cheney Properties Management Corporation, tax map U4, lots 11, 12, and 13. The proposal is to consolidate tax map U4, lots 11, 12, and 13 into one lot, thereby adding the area that currently... Adding the area that currently comprises lots 12 and 13 into the New Market Business Park condominium. Does everyone have a copy of Diane's notes on these? I know there's a copy at my table. If you don't, let me know. Gladly, sure. Couple here.
Oh, we do have a couple copies. My apologies. You got a copy of it, didn't you?
I didn't. If you'd like a copy, I have three more.
Yeah, we also have three of the other ones, too.
And this is the subsequent.
If anyone else wants a copy, I can make copies for you in the morning. I'd be happy to do that.
All right. You're on.
Good evening. My name is Steve Micho from Doucette Survey. This evening, I'm representing Cheney Property Management, Wright Office Management, and Wentworth Douglas Hospital. Excuse me. The property is tax map U4, lots 11, 12, and 13. This application is tied to the next application you're going to see, but the specific purpose of this application is actually twofold. One is to do a lot consolidation, and the second is to do a revised condominium plan without which the next application couldn't happen. Before I get into specifics on this application, I think it might be beneficial to give you some history on the project itself. In 2004, my client received site plan approval from the planning board for a commercial condominium project known as New Market Business Park. That approved plan showed three condo units on the dark green parcel shown on my plan. Since then, two of the units have been constructed upon. In 2006, Wentworth Douglas Hospital received site plan approval for their facility on unit three, and also in 2006, Wright Office Management received site plan approval for a professional office building on unit one, which is currently under construction. Unit two, which is situated on the westerly side of the property, has not yet been sold. The original 2004 approval also identified the two light green lots as quote-unquote "additional land," which simply meant that they could be added into the condominium at a later date. If you fast forward for today, that's exactly what my client wants to do, is add these two lots into the condominium. In order to achieve that, we have to remove all of the interior lines between those three lots, and that's the lot consolidation portion of the application. The condominium portion of the application addresses the improvements that have been constructed on the site since the original approval in 2004, and it also identifies the land being added into the condominium. In a nutshell, an approval of this application would result in one parcel containing four condominium units. Unit number four, which is going to be the land area which now comprises the two lighter green lots, is the subject of your next agenda item. So the only thing that we're doing with this application is removing lot lines and addressing some changes to the interior lines of the condominium.
Is there any questions, comments by the planning board? I have a question for Diane about this. This would... Obviously, this has to happen in order for the next application to happen.
That's correct.
Are you guys tying... I mean, how is this going to work if this is approved and then the next application is not approved?
We would actually request that that not happen. Originally, these were going to be filed as a joint application. Because of the different clients and end-users that were involved, it didn't happen that way. So we're filing the application on behalf of Cheney Property Management and the condominium owners, but as a result of the consolidation, once you remove these lines, you end up with a zoning violation because of the use of the lots. So I have a note on the plan that those buildings and those uses need to be discontinued in order to effectuate the consolidation. My client doesn't want to do that until and unless the next application you see is approved. So we would actually ask that you accept the application, but hold your approval until approval of the next application.
And I think that was Diane's recommendation on this.
Also, when and if the board approves this application, they would... I would recommend a condition that the plan not be signed and recorded until such time as the two structures are removed and, you know, are vacated and removed from the site because then it would become a conforming lot. I just wanted to highlight one point, and that is the two lots, 12 and 13, the lime color and the medium green color, as shown on his plan, currently are non-conforming, legal non-conforming lots, and by this consolidation plan, you're creating a situation where you have a conforming lot. The two lots are non-conforming because they don't meet the town's furniture requirements of 150 feet along Route 108, and one of the two lots also does not meet the half-acre minimum lot size. So if this is approved, then it would be creating a legally conforming lot out of two non-conforming lots. I also wanted to mention that initially, when the plan came before the planning board for approval in 2004, that they had to go to the zoning board of adjustment to get a variance because the frontage on lot number 11, which is in the darker green, also does not meet the 150-foot requirement. So this application would obviate the need for, you know, any variance for that lot. So I just wanted to highlight. I think it basically improves upon an existing situation.
The resulting frontage is in... would be in excess of 300 feet after the consolidation.
The other points that Diane brought up in here is we need more information on reciprocal easements, and I'm not sure what specifically that's referring to.
We had a discussion yesterday and talked about some of these items, and I've actually addressed them on my plan today. I didn't bother bringing in new plans. I thought it would be... Not be advantageous to do that tonight, but the reciprocal easements actually are outlined in the condominium declaration, but I've noted that, the reference book and page on the plan. I've also added the soils data, item number two. I have a call into my client's attorney regarding the condominium declaration. There will be a revised declaration prepared and recorded. I understand the town legal counsel may wish to review that, and once that's available, we'll give it to you. I've added the... a note regarding the total lot frontage for the new lot 11, and I think we talked about number five.
Why... What's the strat... Maybe I missed something. What's the strategy of asking for this first as opposed to putting forth the next application, seeing if that goes through before this? Because that could be... That could be conditioned out when we work that way?
We're not asking at this point, or the applicant isn't asking for approval. It was just the ordering of it on the agenda. The two plans have to be signed... Have to be approved at the same time, and they have to be referenced and reference each other. So it's just, I mean, we have to have one first, and we just... We thought, given that this was a broader... It's fairly straightforward, but I know that we certainly will get into the details of the other plan.
This application allows the next application to happen. I think it'll become more obvious when you see the next application, but there's a prop... There's a proposed building across an existing property line, so in order for that building to be there, that lot line has to go away, and that's part of what this plan does, is make that lot line go away by consolidation of those three lots.
Yes, Chet.
Unit Area 1 that you have, is that constructed now, isn't it?
Unit Area 1 is... It's under construction.
And 2?
2 is vacant, and 3 is the Wentworth Douglas facility.
Why is... Why is unit Area 2 called 2 with that little space that's vacant? Is that just because you want to show that it is vacant?
Now, the original approval had three approved condominium units.
Right.
1, 2, and 3. The plan you're looking at shows the existing conditions of the site. There is no structure on unit 2 currently. Sheet 2 of my plan set addresses all the condominium-related aspects of the project, and it identifies the area which will be unit 2, but currently, there is no construction on unit 2.
So with the entire project, if I remember right, this was due to having three units, not four.
There were three...
The fourth one is coming about because of the next proposal. Is that what you're just saying?
There were three units approved on the plan.
Right.
And as I mentioned, these two lighter green lots were called quote-unquote "additional land," which in condominium language means they're not being declared as a con... as part of the condominium today, back in 2004, but there's a potential, at some point in the future, they will be added into the condominium. And in the declaration, they actually reserved the right for, I think, four additional units to be added to the condominium, and in this scenario, we're adding one, and that's the end of the condominium.
Explain to me what the first proposal has to do with this one. In other words, it's three units. What's this got to do with those three units that we approved?
It's only combining the lots, Chet.
Yeah, I don't care. What's the question? The question is, what does those three units have to do with combining the lots?
They're requesting that the lots be combined so that there'll be one condominium.
For the entire project?
Yes, there'd be one condominium, and there will be...
There'll be one lot.
Four buildings.
Four units and one condominium.
Correct.
So they're... And technically, condominiums are considered subdivisions under the law, under our subdivision regulations. However, it's... The planning board really doesn't have the authority to say, no, we don't like that form of ownership. We'd rather say rental. It's pretty much a perfunctory-type review, but it's basically to get the plans out into the public view and to make sure that the tax assessor's office has all the information that they need to properly tax the property.
Are there other questions by the board?
I feel confused, Chet. Let me...
Condominium is the act... If you recall, Chet, I think you're with... Condominium is just the area and the infrastructure of that whole... Of the solid green at this point. What they want to do is add those two properties to the solid green to make that part of the condominium association, and the only thing the condominium's doing, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, is to provide the infrastructure to the buildings that are going to be built on there. So that's the pavement, the drainage, the sewer, and the water. So when you're thinking of a condominium, you're thinking, I think you're... I think you're thinking of a building. The condominium is that property area that's joint ownership. The condominium will maintain the property, but not the buildings. The buildings are separately owned in this situation.
The word condominium just means the type of ownership. It doesn't necessarily mean residential versus commercial.
Yeah.
My other question is, which is bothering me, if you got the four units, you're talking about, you have one sold? That one of those units is sold, you said?
There are two units that are sold.
The units are already sold?
Yes.
Okay. Who owns the land if you sold the units? Is it still owned by the Cheney Corporation?
The... When the units were sold, they were conveyed with a percentage of the common land. So they... So Wentworth Douglas purchased a unit, which was a land area, and they received... They also acquired a, I think it's a 33 and 1/3% interest in all of the common land. Within the declaration, they reserved the right to add inland, which is what we're doing, proposing to do, and with the understanding that if that happened, the interest in the common land would have to be reconfigured, and that's contained within the condominium documents that were provided to each of the buyers of those units.
George?
I have a question, but it might actually go to the next application. Since the condominium association provides the infrastructure, when you... If and when the next application goes forward, would that infrastructure... How do we ensure that the infrastructure there, the piping, the drainage is adequate for that next piece of property? And I don't... Again, it may not be a question for now.
Yeah, I think that will be addressed in the next application.
Next application.
Specific site design-related questions will...
But the condom... The infrastructure is provided by the condominium association. That's the reason I'm asking.
I think if we allow this and they can't provide the infrastructure, the next application would be denied because they don't have the infrastructure.
I also envision that there would be additional easements placed on the property.
Yes, that's my understanding.
That would... And there would be an easement plan submitted as part of that package.
The way the easements are written...
Clarify the ownership and the rights of the various...
Yeah, the way the easements are written today is they're basically blanket easements that each unit owner has rights over all of the common land for drainage, utilities, that type of thing, and I would guess that's how the attorney would handle it in this situation also.
One of the recommendations will be that the condominium documents and all the easements that go along with them be reviewed by legal counsel prior to the plans being signed. That will be one of my recommendations, just to make sure that all the legal papers are in order so that the town's interests, as well as the future owner's interests, are protected.
Sure.
Now, in terms of the easements and the infrastructure, on unit 2, how would you get to unit 2?
I think that that...
You'd have to drive through a parking lot to get to unit 2.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
And I think that's... Beyond that, that's going to be part of the next application.
That's what we approved back in 2004. Looks different to me. No. Looks different to me.
All right. Is there other questions about the application? Chet, are you?
Did you compare these to the... When we first approved?
Yes, I did. I've spent a lot of time studying the files and reviewing them, and...
Each of these unit owners, or I guess at that time, they may have been potential unit owners, came into the planning board for site plan approval. So each Wentworth Douglas and Wright Office Management both have site plan approval from the planning board.
I remember Wentworth Douglas, what, a year ago?
Yeah.
I think they were both '06, yeah.
I don't remember Wright Plan, but that doesn't mean anything at this point. It's the first thing to go.
Is there any other questions by the board? George?
Maybe not of the applicant, maybe is... I just noticed another memo from Dan Vincent concerning...
Dean Vincent's memo is pertaining to the Dunkin' Donuts site, and when we get to that application, I think it would be appropriate to review that at that time.
Two. I'm over that.
I'm aware of that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mike.
Just for clarification, I guess you would consider the park...
Just for clarification, I guess you would consider the parking areas as part of that common space you were talking about?
Yes, the common areas are defined as common land.
So, I mean, Wentworth has full access to the lot, and if anything is ever done in Unit 2, that lot would be shared with that also.
Correct. The only thing that's limited common area is their, some of the parking spaces are limited common area to a particular unit. And that's identified on sheet, I think it's Sheet 2 of my plan, it's the Revised Condominium Site Plan. We identify which parking spaces are limited common area to which unit. But as far as access, the parking lot, driveway, parking lot area is available for access for each of the unit owners.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. This needs to be limited only to the consolidation of the three lots into a four condominium-type style of ownership. Subsequent to that, we will review the proposed Dunkin' Donuts plan, and at that time, site-specific things to that can be discussed. So this is just about the consolidation of the lots. So if there's anyone who'd like to speak. And I remind, just as a constant reminder, all questions should be addressed to the board, and we will ask the applicant if...
Hi, Rich Alpern, 204 South Main. I would just like to know, what, I haven't heard yet in any of this discussion, what are the advantages for these people now and in the future to do what they're trying to do? And could any of the advantages that they're looking for be of disadvantage to the town now or in the future?
Before you sit down, I'm going to ask you for some clarity on that. Are you trying to ask, I guess, what are you trying to get at?
Why are they doing it? What can they do after this is passed that they couldn't do before? And what could they do in the future if this gets done that they couldn't do before? And could it of any way be of a disadvantage to the town?
That's, that's all.
I think the intent of this is to combine the lots so that they can get to a proposed application for a building there. At this time, the building would be sitting on a property line, which we wouldn't allow. The advantage to the town is that we're taking one approved, but not, or three approved non-conforming lots and creating one conforming lot. Am I summing that up close to correctly? Is there other public comment? And seeing none, I close the public comment period. Is there further questions from the board, or would you like to address the question?
I have two waiver requests. I don't know how you want to handle those.
I will never remember if we deal with the waivers. We have to deal with them before.
We have to accept the application first, and once we've taken jurisdiction, then we can take action on the waivers as the board sees fit.
And, do you need a copy of the waiver?
No, I have a copy of the waiver. Do I hear a motion to accept the plan, given the changes that Diana suggested, that being the county soil surveys, reciprocal easements, the draft of the condominium documents, the frontage being added to the plan?
All right. I think we should wait until we hear the next application.
To accept the plan?
Yeah. We need to understand what's going on altogether.
Can you talk a lot, I don't think they can do it.
Oh, I said, I'm sorry. I said, I think we need to wait on this.
We can do that.
We can recess, we can recess the public hearing and reopen it after we hear the second application, if the board so chooses.
I mean, they're tied together.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I think that's a fair suggestion.
Judy, George, you both seem to have some comment. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to recess this application until after we hear the next application?
I'll still move. A second.
All right. Is there any discussion of the board? Yeah, Mike.
If I understood this application correctly, if the second application that we're going to go to next doesn't fly, this doesn't matter anyway. So I guess my question is, you know, what harm does it do? Because we're, you know, basically just saying, okay, we're going to look at it. But if the next one doesn't fly, you know, it's, doesn't happen.
And following that, we're not approving the application, we're just accepting it into our jurisdiction.
Right.
So then we can speak a lot further. That's, all right, any other discussion of the board?
Yeah, I think, that's where I was going, I was sort of going with Mike, that I'm not sure what the strategy is. If we, if we accept it with the contingency, that this doesn't go through without, you know, without the other application, then...
We're just accepting it for review. We're not approving it this evening.
Right.
I agree. So, all right, is there's any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't understand what you mean by accepting for review.
We have to...
If you're going to accept, if you're going to accept combining the two lots, then you can accept combining the lots.
The process is that when we get an application, the first thing we have to do is, we call it, accepting the application that's taking jurisdiction over it. That's all we're at right now. We're not approving that we want these lots to be combined at this time. This motion is merely, well, there isn't a motion. This, at this time, we're talking about taking this application and saying, yes, we see it, and we will review it. We're not saying, yes, go ahead and combine those lots.
And then it should be stated with the review, a factor in it.
Well, that's, that's implied with the idea of accepting the application.
It's accepting it for review. And the significance of that is, under the state RSAs, the planning board has 65 days within which to take action on a plan or an application that's submitted to it. And as part of that process, it's important to make sure the application is fully complete before the board accepts it and takes jurisdiction of it. We have a checklist that we go through and to make sure that all the pieces are there. And the formal action of acceptance basically starts the clock ticking. From that day forward, then we have 65 days within which to take some kind of action on the application.
Unless, of course, the applicant grants an extension. If we request an extension from the applicant for the application, typically, they'll grant it because the other option would be deny it, so. So this, at this time, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded, and that's to postpone this public hearing until after we hear the next application. And if there's no more discussion, I will ask people to signify that they do want to postpone this by saying aye, and signify that they do not want to postpone this by saying nay. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please say nay. Nay. All right, so four to two. And abstain, sorry. Peter and George.
I can, so you have to...
Oh, you're an alternate, I'm sorry. All right, so four, two, and one.
I have to remember that, too.
So at this point, we're postponing the application until after we hear the next proposal.
Thank you.
Up at this time is a public hearing for acceptance and consideration of an application for site plan requested by Antonio Selma for a property located on Exeter Road at the entrance of the New Market Business Park, tax map U4, lots 12 and 13, Zone B1. The proposal is to construct the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant at a second-floor office, and a second-floor office. Existing structures will be removed. The new building will be two stories with a 2,490-square-foot restaurant and a 2,490 square-foot office. The site shall be serviced by municipal water and sewer.
Good evening. My name is Ben Walden from Atar Engineering. With me tonight is Chris Stares from my office, Wendy Anderson from Woodlot, sorry, from Woodburn and Associates, landscape architects, Bill Eaton from Eaton Traffic Engineering, and Taylor Moynihan, who's an architect. What we're proposing is a 2,490-square-foot Dunkin' Donuts with a second-floor office space. The building and parking lot will utilize the existing business park entrance exit with a second entrance off of 108. The building will utilize existing water, sewer, and utilities from the existing business Most traffic or traffic heading south will enter the project through the business park. Traffic coming north will either enter using the southern entrance or use the business park entrance.
You can get that reverse, excuse me. If you travel slowly, I'm going to have to...
I'm sorry, you are absolutely correct. I apologize. South, north. Parking on site, there is required by ordinance, there's 19 spaces required. We have provided 26 for additional spaces for the office and for employees for the office and for Dunkin' Donuts. At this time, I'd like to have Bill Eaton discuss the traffic.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bill Eaton of Eaton Traffic Engineering in Tops in Maine. I'll be doing the traffic study. It has not been done. We have just met with the State Department of Transportation for what they refer to as a scoping meeting to determine the area to be evaluated, the intersections to be looked at, et cetera. They have indicated that we have to look at the entrance to the site, the business park road, Jerry Avenue at Route 108, and Route 152 at Route 108. And we will be taking traffic counts at those locations. I understand there's construction out there right now, but we worked a way out with the state of being able to take counts at a couple of different intersections that will reflect what's going on, and we can recreate that, as well as, we already had taken, and some of you probably noticed, there was two road tubes on Route 108 sitting out here a couple of months ago. That was a count for Dunkin' Donuts. They require a seven-day count in order to make sure that they want to be at this particular location. So I've got those as well to tie in all of this information. So we'll be looking at the year of opening, which will be next year, 2008, and also the year 2018, 10 years out. We'll be looking at growth in traffic and what could be going on. And that will be in conjunction with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Obviously, one of the purposes from being here tonight, other than to introduce you to the project, is to hear what some of your own local concerns might be regarding traffic. I don't want to do a traffic study and not address what might be of local concern, so I would be very thankful if you can provide that information to me, and I can include that in the analysis. And with that, I guess that's the end at this point. I can't really answer any straight questions for you, I can give you a general idea. These Dunkin' Donuts stores typically generate their heaviest traffic in the morning, sometime between 7:00 and 9:00. A typical Dunkin' Donuts, regardless of size, generates about 330 vehicle trips in a one-hour period of time. That's 165 cars going in and 165 cars coming out. The thing that mitigates that to a certain extent is the fact that about 70% of those cars are cars that are already passing by the site. In other words, we're drawing from the traffic that's already out there. So when you get one or two intersections away, the impact is not 165 trips, it's 30% or less of that. So the impact on a Dunkin' Donuts tends to be right at the site. So we'll be taking a careful look at the need for a potential left-turn lane at the entrance to the business site. We've already indicated the need for a small deceleration lane to get traffic out of the floor of 108 without causing any disruptions in the traffic flow and get them into the site for those vehicles that want to enter from the southbound. So those are all things that we'll be taking a look at as part of this entire process. And with that, I'll stop and turn it over to whoever's going to take it after that, and I'll be obviously here to answer any questions and...
All right.
We're working with a building that's basically 30 feet by 83 feet. The first floor will be the Dunkin' Donuts primarily, and it basically has an entrance, vestibule off the parking lot, seating area, front and rear service lines, and service cases for a drive-through window there on the back corner. And there's a prep area and stockroom towards the right end of the building. It's a two-story building, so there's a stair, stair hall, and an elevator core on the front of the building with a separate entrance for the second-floor tenants. Second floor is pretty much wide open at this point. I do show some, you know, a proposed room layout, but it could be, it could be very variable at this point. The only thing that is fixed is the stair, the elevator, and the hall. In terms of the exterior appearance, front of the building, basically, that's the entrance vestibule for the Dunkin' Donuts, and that's the entrance for the second floor. Tenant spaces, it's a wood-framed building, two stories with a basement, wood-trussed roof, asphalt shingle roofing, vinyl siding and trim proposed at this point. Vinyl-clad wood windows for the second story and aluminum storefront glazing with grills, mullion grills proposed for the first floor. The end elevation, basically, we have two gable ends with a setback between the first and second floor, and gable dormers on the front. Rear elevation on the lower level is pretty much blank because it's all service area for the Dunkin' Donuts. There's a drive-through window on the, on the end, and then there's a clear second story with, again, the windows for the office space. And on the other end of the building, the left end of the building, similar double gable setback and a canopy over the service door. Again, cladboard siding and trim and asphalt shingle roofing. And these are progress drawings, subject to some change in terms of detail and so forth. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
We've got one more, is that it? Sorry.
Hi, I am Wendy Anderson from Woodburn and Company Landscape Architecture. We have done the planting plan for the site. We have provided, you know, basic landscaping requirements are basically just to provide a ground cover and trees. We've done more than that. We've, most of the site that isn't taken up by shrubs is grass. The detention area is taking care of the water would be grasses and forbs flowering plants that would be able to take any water that would normally flow through there. We've provided extra to what's required, shrub screening in between the trees, as in kind of loose hedges, to provide screening from the parking and from the rest of the site as around front from 108. We've provided planting around the sign. We've provided screening along the side in like a juniper shrub hedge that would get taller, like 15 to 20 feet, and some extra screening around the end of the building to help hide any of the utility structures, such as the LP gas tank standpipe that would be coming up out of the ground. It is a buried LP tank, but the rest of it is screened by planting on that end. Getting to the trees, which are the part that's required, basically, the requirement is one tree per 500 square feet of disturbed area, and we have about 40,000 square feet of disturbed area for this site, so that means we need 80 trees. We have provided 49... We have provided 49, but if you can see, this side is pretty much stuffed with trees. We've provided them at 30 feet on center, which is about all that we recommend. Any closer, you know, they can be too close and they shade each other and you get competition and limb drop and all of that stuff. So we tried to space them out appropriately so they'll be healthy. As you can see, we've, we've provided as many as we possibly could for that. Is there any questions?
Do you have a site for the dumpster or waste?
The dumpster is back in this area, and you can barely see it in this plan because it's covered up by trees. It's screened on this side by those shrubs, and on this side, it's actually, there's a retaining wall behind it, so...
Yes, Dan.
I have a couple of questions. One of the provisions of our site review regulations encourages the preservation of the natural features of the site. There's some lovely old trees on the site, and there's some beautiful landscaping presently. And as part of your landscape analysis, did you consider retention of the existing or some of the existing vegetation and using that, working that into the overall design? I wanted to also mention that you can get a break, if so to speak, on some of the tree requirements if you do preserve the natural features of the site. So, could you respond to that?
Yeah, I don't know if you would...
Sure.
...provide part of that answer?
Yeah. Unfortunately, and I'll show you another plan here that shows grading for the site. Unfortunately, this site, it's fairly steep. It does, the grade increases fairly dramatically from the front to the rear of the property. And the, the real issue is, once you put the house in, sorry, the structure in with associated parking, this entire area really needs to be fairly level. You really don't want to be much more than 4% or so. As noted, there's retaining walls in the front of this parking lot and along the back of the property. The reason I mention these at this point is, unfortunately, with the amount of regrating we'll need to do in order to facilitate the parking of the building, there will not be much area left that is undisturbed.
All right. Other, I have a couple of questions for the traffic engineer, actually. My first question is, you had mentioned a scoping meeting with DOT, and I was curious if the New Market Planning Board or representative was invited to that meeting.
I don't know who was invited. The state usually takes care of that. I know they contacted the town. The town manager was at the meeting.
Okay. And my next, my biggest concern about this proposal is having the train tracks, which now have a light on them, and we've had, I guess, one near miss, but it would be considered an accident. And I believe from my quick and dirty measurement of the plan, it's 160 feet from your, from your entrance, which queuing at 330 vehicle trips at a AMP peak is awful scary to me. When that lever goes down, someone might be in trouble quick.
Going to be right in the middle of it.
Yeah. So that's, that's my biggest concern, just to let you know that. My next question is, what are the intersections that you agreed could be studied with DOT? You said that there had to be some concessions about what intersections would be studied due to construction?
Oh, they, New Hampshire DOT did identify those three intersections, 152, 108, Jerry Avenue and 108, Route 108 and the entrance into the, the business park. And we recognize that Route 108 is closed right now. But if you look at the way it's closed, if you count at the intersection of Jerry and 152, and back down at 152 and 108, you can recreate what was happening back at those other intersections. And as I say, you could raise the issue of other people that are not going down there that might have visited one of the downtown...
Absolutely.
...and, and then kept on going. So that's why I say that we've got a count out here, which is done. I can, I can bring it out on a 15-minute basis to use as a check, to make sure that our numbers make sense, and we'll, of course, run those by DOT. And if, they've also got some factors, if things don't look good, they've got factors from council all around the state, and they can say, well, if you take account on such and such a date, you multiply it by one point, whatever, and adjust it, but...
And the other intersection that I would throw out there is New Road and 108 there. That's where our fire department is coming off of, and I think that that's a major concern, and it's, it's right there.
Okay.
For, for this amount of vehicle traffic, it's certainly worth consideration. And I was curious if you could tell me what the, what the ADT is on the road there?
Yes. If you can bear with me a second. Weekly average was 14,754, and this was a count that was done in May 17th of this year, or week beginning, May 17th. We left it out there for a week.
And my last question was, for your 2018 projection, were you planning on tying into the regional traffic model that exists?
Yeah, they, they indicated we should talk to the, is it Stratford?
Stratford and Rockingham work together.
Right, the Regional Planning Commission, yeah, we would, we would take a look at that. Usually they, if they have a traffic model, which a lot of the agencies do now, then they can take a look at projected volumes and existing volumes, and they can give us a, a growth factor that we can apply, and that's what we'll be using.
And I believe 2017 is one of their out years, but I'm not sure 2018 is.
Well, 2017 and 2018, it's a little...
Just letting you know.
You're probably not...
Just letting you know. Dan?
You finished?
Yep.
Okay. I just have a couple of special requests, and one is that in the future, if there's a scoping meeting with the Department of Transportation, that if you could please coordinate with the planning department and make sure that we know about it so that we can invite planning board members if they are interested in joining us, and also so that we can have our own traffic engineer be present. I heard about it after the fact, and otherwise, you know, I would have attended that meeting had I known it was going to be held.
Yeah, who made, who, you said, who extended the invitations for that?
The, the New Hampshire Department of, of Transportation.
And they invited the town administrator?
They, I think, I, don't take me at this 100%. My understanding was that they notified the town, and then they expected the town to disseminate the information and, and do that, and we usually depend upon that.
Well, our expectation is that the planning board or the town planner will be involved in that.
Al Dixon from the Town in New Market was present at the...
Yeah, I understand that, but he's not on the planning board.
I would be interested also, presuming the planning board accepts the application for review, that we get a copy of the scope of, of work that will be completed as part of the traffic study, and that we have our own traffic engineer review that to make sure that it's complete and includes evaluation of all the key hotspots, so to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other, George?
When you do this evaluation, will you take into account the traffic flow from the rest of the commercial entities in that area, which is what, Brooks? Is it Brooks still? Yeah. Rite Aid.
Rite Aid's coming.
And just south of that, I believe, I can't remember the intersection with the police stations on, is another, there's two major intersections there.
And Bennett Way would actually be worth considering, because there's a lot of vehicle traffic on that.
Yeah, well, actually, we'll, we'll actually, you know, we'll do actual traffic counts, which incorporates all the traffic that's out there on the street. And then we'll add on top of that the new traffic associated with this particular development. And then that'll, that'll provide us with a condition for 2008. And then we'll do the same thing, we'll project traffic to 2018 based on whatever growth factors and information, add the site-generated traffic to that again, and reevaluate it at that point. So, yeah, it'll, it'll include all the traffic that's there. I mean, the only thing that it wouldn't include is if, out of the blue, some large development came in that nobody had anticipated and wasn't incorporated in the regional transportation projections, et cetera. And I would suspect if it was that large, it would be getting a great deal of scrutiny from you folks anyhow.
Peter?
As a traffic engineer, what is the great value of having a southbound entrance, kind of short cutting the, is that really necessary?
It's desirable, primarily because it minimizes, it keeps down the amount of traffic going in here, and it gets it off the street faster. You know, it's, it's, it's a very standard design. We use this on, you know, convenience stores, convenience gas stations, that type of thing, is to try and pull the traffic out of there, just because it's essentially a non-conflicting movement, as long as it's designed properly, so that the cars do not have to slow down enough to cause any type of friction in the, in the traffic flow, and getting them off the road works better than having them slowing down up here. So we just try to pull them out of the traffic stream early.
I'm just calling out of the frame, I don't have your training, I don't have your background, but I'm just saying, I'm just thinking, but with the concern expressed about the proximity of the railroad crossing, and as well as the, the implications ahead to just watching Dunkin' Donuts and traffic flows and so forth and so on, a very busy situation, and I'm concerned, very concerned with that particular entrance.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a very, very strong look at that as we go, but, you know, just, are there, I didn't pay attention when I was out there, are there, I'm assuming there are wigwags at, on the railroad crossing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And accidents with the wigwag.
Right. And, because those things are based on a motion sensor, there's probably somewhere between 30 and 45 seconds before the train gets there, the lights go off. So that should be adequate time to clean out any queue that might be building in that area. But, we, as I say, we will take a look at that.
Yep, John.
Yeah, who can talk about parking?
You want to talk about parking?
Sure. Okay. You can help if you'd like.
I'll stick around.
Okay.
Have you considered putting the parking in the back and putting the building in front?
We have. The tough part is, in order for the drive-through to work, you still need to have the driver, obviously, being the left side of the car, close to the building. As you move the building forward, you know, the, the car ends up being, and the, the drive-up window ends up being on the front side of the building instead of the back side of the building. So at this point, the...
And the last thing you need to see when you, when you come through is, is a lot of cars parked in front of a building. All you have to do is look at the post office in town and see that that's not the most desirable design.
I agree, and unfortunately, as far as the drive-through goes, you know, it's, you know, which is...
And the drive-through is absolutely necessary for this project?
I, I can't imagine a Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through. I think, I think...
I could.
A huge portion of their, of their, of their business comes through the drive-through.
I would really look at, at the parking situation in the back, because seeing cars in front of a building is just not attractive, and that's, I don't think that's what we want in New Market.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Peter, and then Chuck, and then George.
Where is it designated parking for the office?
There is no designated parking for either, either the office or for Dunkin' Donuts. It's, it's more of a first come, first served.
That was my question.
Okay. George?
I'm not really enthralled about the circulation pattern in the parking. I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Badger about the parking itself, but coming in on that north, north, can we, that direction, right, the north entrance, that little entrance that comes on the southbound side, you have two-lane, two-lane traffic that has to go around. Somebody coming in from the main entrance has to go all the way around for the drive-through. Anybody who's coming in that entrance has to wrap around, and if they don't want to go through the driver, have to wrap through the drive-through and then back into the parking lot. I'm, I'd be interested in knowing what, if that's norm, or, that circulation pattern doesn't make sense to me.
Well, and, and to piggyback onto that, they're coming off of 108 and moving straight into the moving lane rather than the lane that's going to be stopped for the drive-through, which is a concern too, I think, so...
So...
You know, you're showing two lanes, one's going to be more or less static, and the other one's going to be moving, probably at a rapid rate, because now they have caffeine. And that's, they're moving straight into, to fast traffic, so...
Well, there really shouldn't be fast traffic coming this way. This is two-way traffic.
Okay.
So you can leave the parking lot in this direction and enter back out onto, into the business drive.
Okay.
The only time you'd be using this, the second lane, is if you got into the queue and decided you didn't want to wait, or for an emergency situation where there was a queue and emergency vehicles needed to get by.
Is that a reality with, with drivers today?
What's...
I'm, I'm, I'm being dead serious about this. Is that a reality, that that would be, not be used by people as a more or less racing lane to get out of there?
No, but, I, I mean, I guess in my view, if I can take a right here and get back out to the same place instead of going all the way around, I'm going to take a right out of this parking lot and take the shortest distance.
Mike, and then George.
As far as the, I guess that's the north entrance, the, the short one, correct?
This one here from 108.
Right, okay, as far as that entrance is concerned, has there been any consideration given to making that an exit right turn only, to alleviate some of the concerns with the tracks? I mean, you know, if, if you were just coming out that way, it would serve all of your patrons that are parked there, and if it's just strictly a right turn only, then it's not...
Rather than, rather than entrance, you mean?
Rather than an entrance, yes, strictly as an exit.
Well, we, at this point, there is a, there is a right-hand turn lane, you know, from the business park. So as you're leaving your drive-through, you know, you're, you're entering right out into the business, business park entrance exit anyway. And if we can minimize the number of...
Right, but I, I think what you're going to find, with my experience of 108, is in the morning, where you've probably got the largest amount of your traffic, that's where the, the people are heading from Main Street towards Exeter. That's, that's where they're headed. So that's going to be the, the entrance that probably 70, 75% of the people are going to want to use. That's where you can get your bottleneck, and with the tracks being in close proximity, I, you know, I, I'm just thinking that the, the solution for that, and still keeping your, your cut-in, is to make that an exit only.
But unfortunately, I think the idea is that we are going to grab the traffic heading south and get them off of 108.
You grab it a couple hundred feet up, too, if they want to stop, I mean...
Move it up towards, move it south more, so that it...
Or eliminate it.
You've got the main entrance, which is, which is fine, and it's going to give you a lot better control of, of backup as far as your morning commute is concerned, by directing people down to that main entrance. You know, it's, it's just, I think the concern is the proximity to the tracks, the fact that they're adding extra rails to that right now, extra trips to, on the down Easter. You know, I can see the hazard in the morning.
Well, and it's a 25-foot deceleration lane, that's...
Right.
Two cars, if you're really lucky.
That was, that was something that Administrator Dixon mentioned that did come out of the scoping meeting, is that the DOT wanted to see that the deceleration lane be extended, that it be lengthened. I don't know what the discussion was precisely, but we...
And we will certainly look at extending that decelerization lane, which, you know, really should grab any of the traffic coming off of 108. And, and as Bill said, you know, he is going to take a close look at that, at that entrance.
And George, you had your hand up in that, Peter?
Yeah, I'm still not, I, you don't have to answer it now, but I think the overall circulation pattern is, is poor. And anybody going in from that northbound entrance, and people coming in from the other side, they make a left-hand turn into the parking lot and going around for the drive-through, there's going to be conflict there. I'm really concerned about people who come in from that northbound entrance, want to wrap around and park, and somebody coming in from the, from the industrial entrance. I, I just, I see a lot of conflict, and I think some, I, you know, you need to address that. The other thing I would maybe suggest, it's a little different from Mike, is to make that northbound entrance only the drive-through entrance. Anybody who wants to come in and park has to come into the industrial side, and that would take away that conflict I'm talking about.
This, right here, is this the conflict?
Well, no, I think the overall pattern in, in the parking lot. So, I mean, if you come in from that northbound entrance and want to park, you have to go wrap yourself all the way around to get to the parking lot. And what you're doing is, if anybody coming in from the industrial side, you're going to have conflict. It's, it's, it's going to be congestion.
And I think as, as we talked about at the, at the staff meeting, I think it's going to be a very short amount of time for everyone to recognize the, the pattern that's here. And if the, and if you do want to go in and park, you're going to recognize that, yes, I'm going to go through the business park entrance, then to the parking, you know, and most of the people are going to be going for that drive-through.
So if that's what you want, then make that a drive-through entrance only.
Eliminate this area down in here.
Yeah, make, make the northbound entrance only, only a drive-through and... Yeah, make, make the northbound entrance only, only a drive-through entrance.
It is, it is something to consider, certainly, and...
That's what I'm asking.
And I would, but I would, I would definitely have to run it by, um, by safety, you know, fire and police, to make sure that that is, you know, acceptable. But it is certainly something we, we will definitely look at.
No, I was just going to say, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I've had some concerns about the internal circulation from the very beginning. I don't like the two-lane business. I think there's just too much impervious surface. What is the percentage of impervious surface with the plan as proposed?
I don't know off the top of my head.
At least seventy.
It's like seventy percent.
Yeah, it's way up there.
And, um, and I agree with Mr. Badger that, you know, we shouldn't, as a general rule, encourage parking in the front of buildings. We should have the building up front with the parking behind. Also, from a, you know, urban design scale, we want to try to mirror, if you will, the setbacks and the scale of buildings and their proportion along that section of roadway, so that whatever is proposed really fits in better with the overall neighborhood character. And one way of doing that is to push the building up to the front and put the parking in the back. Also, I've had some concerns that just, isn't a lot of open space there for landscaping and for buffering and aesthetics. And part of that is because of the, the traffic configuration. And I even thought maybe a one-way loop system would work better. And I would like to see the traffic consultant who's hired by the town evaluate some of those different options and evaluate the different proposals that have been set forth by the planning board this evening, and advise as to their feasibility and whether they make sense from a traffic engineering and planning standpoint.
And Peter had a comment, question?
I have spoken. My concerns about that driveway at the park. In support of that, I would also say that that's another break in the traffic, or somebody has, a break in foot traffic, where somebody has to be very careful crossing over there, as cars approach for an entrance there. I don't think that if you enter from the main park entrance, if you will, that is, is much of a concern because it would be a big problem with the lights. Second, and just my point is, I think you want to look at, if you don't already have a stop sign as you exit, because you're going to be crossing traffic to get around that alley and, you know...
A stop sign here?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah. I think there's a stop sign. If not, I will certainly add it. There should be a stop sign.
What are your plans for signage?
At this point, we are, we're going, we're going by the ordinance and proposing the, the standard Dunkin' Donuts sign.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to remind the applicant and the planning board that this section of Route 108 is subject to our architectural design controls. There's a special section in our site review regulations. And things such as signage, the materials that are used in the landscaping and fencing and all the different landscape details. We would like to have those be reviewed by our advisory heritage committee. And I'm also suggesting that maybe we set up a special subcommittee and bring some folks in town who are landscape architects and architects into the process and maybe give us some advice on how we might be able to encourage design improvements that are going to be more compatible with the neighborhood, and will also respect the New Market, Main Street concept that we're trying to set forth along that corridor and into the downtown.
George?
Going along similar to Mr. Badger's suggestion of moving it forward, how about, and being sympathetic to the fact that you have a drive-through and have to go from the left-hand side of the car, is there a different way of orienting the building? It may not completely answer Mr. Badger's question, but orienting it more east-west, and bringing it forward or to the side, to, to the, to the south. So the parking is on the side as opposed to the front. Again, I don't know if you can answer that now, but that's something I think you ought to, is there another orientation to the building that would work?
We have looked at orient, orientating the, the building east-west or sideways in this case. And at, at this point, we haven't been able to achieve even, even what we have here.
Yeah, and I think, just to reiterate, one thing that I'm seeing is, in the southwest corner of the building, it looks like you have some sort of bollard system so that people can't make a left turn in there to park, which begs the question of the self-turn-in lane and the second lane in the loop, what its usefulness is if all it's going to do is route them back out and they'll never be able to, A, hit the drive-through, or B, make a left turn there. If you like, I can illustrate that for you, but, you know, you have two lanes. That one lane's going to be routed right out.
Yeah.
Or they're going to have a huge left conflict in front of the person who just got through the drive-through. And then they're going to have a big island to get around. So it seems to me that there's a lot of conflicts created. So either drop the island or drop the extra lane, or drop the turn-in. Something there needs to go away, because those aren't working. Yeah, well, that's, that's true, too. If they make it past that. Mike?
To help solve the issues of front and back parking, whatever, if, if you move the drive-up window to the side of the building, doesn't that alleviate it, so it...
Well, that was my thought. Tip it down like this, and then the drive-up window could be here. You have one lane around, and the parking's here.
The parking could be out back.
Almost every concern that we've brought up.
So really, your only traffic going around is, is your drive-through traffic. That's it. And, and we eliminate the loop around and everything else but doing that.
The problem there becomes that people only have a little bit of a queue, and you're going to have people queued up on 108.
Oh, not if...
Other than that, it...
Not if you make that an exit only.
Yeah, well, that's true. Absolutely.
Also, I think we need to be mindful that, I think there's a residential land use that's adjacent.
Yep.
And that if we put the drive-through window there, it might be a nuisance to, to the neighbors that live in that area.
I know, uh, one of the local towns, I believe Hampton, has an ordinance that doesn't allow, uh, do they call them squawk boxes, the, the talking drive-throughs? And, uh, obviously, we're a little too late for that, but it would certainly be worth considering, because I'm sure that's going to be part of the objection of the, of the public on this. All right, um, yes, Diane?
I just have one other question for the landscape architect. There's some trees along the northerly boundary that you've specified. I think you said they were some kind of juniper. That area along there has also been designated the, as the snow storage area. It's like a fifteen-foot area along the parking lot, adjacent to where the trees are.
Right here?
My quest, yes. And my question is, are those trees and the landscaping that's proposed in that area such that they will withstand snow loads and the salt that would be associated with, um, snow plowing in that area?
I've used ash and oaks, which, and actually, I can go through the list for you. We've used ash, junipers, oaks, and flowering pears, and amalacur, which is also service berry. All are, which are commonly used in parking lots and along streets and can withstand snow load and salt and all kinds of normal urban conditions. As far as the side goes, it, it does actually have a swale here and then slopes down. I think I just looked back up on the other side.
Sells back down towards 108.
Down, yeah, down to, down to here. So the swale goes this way, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Um, these trees are farther away, so I do not believe...
They're on top of the hill as well?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're on top of the hill, so it's not really going to affect the junipers here. And it goes down to a swell and then up a little bit back towards the lane here. So really, that's, it's not as much of an issue if you, if you look at the grade, the grading. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, good point. Can someone speak to the hours of operation and lighting plan? Yes, George?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, the lighting plan is in the works. Um, we are working on a lighting plan with similar lighting fixtures to what's in the business park. And I just recently was told that that's not the best way to go. So we are, we are going to wait for the, the specs from the lights that are used on the rest of downtown. And so a lighting plan will be in the future. As far as hours of operation, at this point, I am not, I don't know exactly what the hours of operation are. Certainly can, can tell you in the future.
Thank you.
And I guess the next thing to do is open this up to the public hearing. And again, I ask you to stick strictly to this proposal at this time and, and raise your hand. When you get up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Judy Ryan. I live at 125 Main Street. I have a number of questions. I mean, you've certainly discussed the traffic and answered some of those or raised some of those questions. The other thing I have is, as was mentioned, there was no designated parking for office or employees. I'm wondering what spaces they're going to be taking, and how large, how many employees would be in the office space. The other question I have is, how many cars it would take to back up through the drive-in onto 108? That would cause a problem backing up onto the, onto the road. I have concerns about the landscaping and the trees that would be removed.
Can you be more specific about those?
The trees?
Yeah.
The existing trees?
Okay.
And that they, they should at all, all intent be preserved if at all possible, rather than destroying those? Could you refresh my memory? Is there a sidewalk on that side of the road?
Yes.
Okay. Because that would be foot traffic coming in, that cars would then be crossing over. You've already mentioned the train tracks, which I have a concern about, as we've had accidents there going through the, the gates. The turning of the traffic, which you've already mentioned. The hours of operation would certainly be very early in the morning, and how long they would go at night. And would the drive-in be operating at night? I'm also concerned about the discussion of a retaining wall and how that would be appearing to be exposed to the public of view from 108. There's also the question of where the dumpsters might be and their exposure to visibility. Let's see what else. I haven't wrote these little questions here, Tracy designed. I think that covers it. You've, you've mentioned a number of things that I had already had written down. And I'll put another hat on and just say that from the Heritage Advisory Commission, we'd be more than happy to work with you on the design of the building.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the, uh, one of the conditions is going to be they're going to have to speak with you guys, as is typical. And I think more or less we talked, at least touched upon most of your points, but...
Right.
I've written down the other ones, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Yes, sir. You, yeah.
My name is Martin McKinsey from Washington Street. I, I spoke actually at, at the first one of these presentations, if I don't repeat myself too much. I appreciated all the questions that you, that you posed concerning the logistics as well as appearance of it. And that certainly did raise, I mean, correspond to some of my issues. And I'm also very sympathetic to the work that has gone into, that these people have put into this. Obviously, there's been a lot. I think, you know, again, we have to keep in mind that this is enterprise aimed at profit, and, which is fine, that's how the system works. But it does seem to me that, that the, the role of government is really defined a balance between the entrepreneurial profit motive and the, the best interests of the community. And so that's really what I want to address, which may go along, a little further beyond the, the, the planning board's jurisdiction, but I'll, I'll raise them anyway. It, New Market does seem to be a town that values its, its distinctness, its, the quality of life, and, and really it's down, you know, the Main Street, it's downtown life, you know. Looking forward to the mill buildings being developed as well as Main Street being improved. So with that in mind, I guess, as you consider granting various waivers and, and variances for this project, really ask yourselves, you know, and, you know, is it really in the town's benefit to pave the way for another chain to move in here? You know, that will contribute to the sprawl issue, that's a big issue in, in all small as well as large towns, that, again, as, as people pointed out, will raise certain traffic issues on, on a Road 108 that is, already has traffic issues. And, and again, you know, from what people say about, you know, left turns in and out of here, it looks like maybe there will have to be a traffic light there at some point. And just as a question of, is that, is that really a precedent we want to set? This was raised actually at the first one of these meetings, so...
That hasn't been decided yet.
Oh, that's fine, okay. It hasn't been decided, but it still seems to be in the air. And then again, you know, what, you know, what kind of business will this draw away from locally owned businesses on Main Street? Especially if it opens in 2008, as, as apparently this was, was, was the notion. 2008 is the year when Main Street will be going through all sorts of construction. At meetings about the Main Street development, business owners there did express concerns about the effect that that would have on their business. You know, some even saying, you know, we, we will have to close down if, with, with the impact this will have on our, on our businesses. So I guess, you know, that's, that's the gist of what I wanted to say. And so, again, you know, is this project serving the best interests of the people of New Market? And in terms of larger visions, you know, I mean, after all, this is the main entrance, I mean, this is the main approach to town. First impressions, you know, there's already the McDonald's there, if there's a Dunkin' Donuts, what's next? Is this really, is this really kind of the image of, of New Market that we want to project? So I guess that's what I'd say. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Excuse me.
Yes.
Are you this Martin?
I'm the very same.
Yes.
Could you explain for me, it says here, "Before letting this project be waved through Town Hall." Could you explain that, please?
What was the phrase?
It's right here. It says, "Waved through town, waved through by Town Hall."
Could you explain that?
Basically, I guess I, I wanted there to be some sort of input from the community. That's what I was urging people to do. I didn't suggest that it was going to be waved through, and I certainly saw last time, and certainly it's been established today, that it's not going to be waved through.
That's a rather inflammatory statement, I think.
I apologize, but I did want to get people's attention, I guess. Let me put it that way. You know, yes, it was a little bit of propaganda, but it was something that I wanted to make people stand up and take, take note of, okay? Last time I came to one of these planning board meetings, you know, there were like three or four people. If, if, if that poster actually got some people here, you know, I don't apologize for that. I think it's good that people do...
No, I think that's good.
I think it is good that people get involved in, in local politics.
I, I think what John...
Again, you know, I, I didn't mean to cast any aspersions on...
I think what John's trying to get to is, is those of us who sit here month after month, it's, it's a little discouraging to see such things, because we happen to know that that's not the case. And, and we do spend a lot of time on this, not only sitting here, but at our homes every night. I, I didn't spend time with my wife last night to review applications, so I, I would encourage you not...
Again, okay, that's fine. I do, I do apologize for that.
Not to follow along those lines in the future. It's a little disheartening.
And I hope that that does not taint the other remarks that I made, which I think, do think are valid. And as a citizen in, in New Market, I do hope that they are, they are heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes. Oh, sorry. This gentleman was up last time. Yeah, you. No, sorry, the gentleman behind you. Just trying to keep order. I don't want anyone getting mad at me.
My name is Al Knight. I live on 59 Exeter Road. A couple of issues. Can I ask you if any of you went to the town meetings, the... Can I ask you if any of you went to the town meetings dealing with the flood bowl? Probably not, because I don't remember seeing anybody there. One, one of the biggest contributions to the, our flooding problem is drain off from Exeter Road. Now, what little is left from the last Cheney development, and, and let me just remind, that Cheney thought this up and ran it by you people about four, five, six years ago. Not particularly you, but the planning board. So they had a plan, already come through with a plan, how to use our property. This is an addition. This will take most of the remaining grass and lawn and making it a parking lots or buildings, which is going to just add to the flow going down to the hill, which would add to our other problem. And coincidentally, I never had flooding until the Cheney thing was developed and the New Market present, the improvement Plan One came through. But then it's also, it's also, it's rained pretty much the past two years. But during the Phase One, they've put sidewalks, large, wide sidewalks on each side, and there's no room to park on the side of, the side of the road that's heading towards Exeter. Theoretically, parking doesn't even start on my side of, of the road, the road heading towards New Market, until my place, 59 Exeter Street. So there's no place there for a breakdown lane or a deceleration lane or any other kind of lane. Because if I try to make a left, and, and what I had to do with, with the, with the 108 traffic, I built a little, I had two driveways on my property, and I developed a little parking lot on one of my lawns. That's the only way I can get out, because you cannot back out of any of these, these houses during rush hour. And that's without 165 more people coming to go to Dunkin' Donuts. The safety problem, we, that wasn't a near miss, that was a hit up, up, up on there. There's been several near misses that I've witnessed myself. Also, coming from New Market up the hill, a police cruiser ended up on the porch of 55 Exeter Street. And it only takes a couple of cars backing up there, and, and you can't see anything coming up the hill from town. And you cannot stop a car going 25 to 30 miles an hour in 130 feet. So there's going to be accidents waiting for hap, waiting to happen. And if there's an accident, you're not going to be able to push the car out of the road. You might be luckily to get people out, but there's going to be a lot of problems with, with the railroad tracks. So I think just, just summing up, it's a bad idea. It's, it's going to ruin, it's, it's going to cause more runoff. It's a safety idea. And the town spent millions of dollars into, into the development of Phase One. And somehow that's going to, all those roads will have to be taken out, torn apart, or, or, or made into a breakdown lane. So here we go again. Whoever thought up the, and I, I admit, I wasn't in favor of, of the Phase One. So maybe that's what's running it through a town meant. Maybe that's what he meant by that. Because there was a lot of people that don't believe that this should go on any further, the Phase Two or Phase Three. But it seems to be doing it even when, when the town doesn't vote the money for it. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. And there was a gentleman here, yes.
22 Nichols Ave?
Up at the mic, please.
22 Nichols Ave? I was just, I'm not going to take a lot of time. I was just wondering if we've considered the whole water issue concerning this, because they're like main product. Uses a lot of water. I don't, if we've solved that situation with the infrastructure yet or not.
I think that definitely has to be a consideration. The last I've heard, and that's not for this application, is that there wasn't too much of a water restriction at this time, but we'll certainly revisit that.
That's all I want.
And can I, can I get your name for the record?
Jeff Fashon.
Thank you. And I saw, are you all set, or did you have other comments?
That was it. That was, that was my main thing, because I, you know, everyone's discussed the traffic and everything already, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I saw a gentleman back there, yes? Yep.
I'm Alan Thorpe, I represent the residents at 52 Exeter Street, budding lot on the side of the property. Looking at the diagrams, it appears there's going to be a fair amount of cutting here, leaving a fair embankment. And I'm just concerned about the residents here with children and pets possibly coming down the hill into this driveway. So I'm suggesting it might be worth considering a stockade fence along that boundary in addition to the shrubbery to hide the fence.
Thank you. And ma'am?
My name is Monica Coyne, 9 Granite Street. I have several questions. One is some of the traffic areas that they are looking at, which is Jerry Avenue, 108, 152 and Jerry Avenue. I don't know if people are aware that 9 Granite Street is elderly and disabled housing. We've had to have ambulances come in and out with the traffic configuration. An ambulance or a fire truck trying to get through towards Exeter Hospital would be virtually impossible. And when people are having strokes and heart attacks, all those seconds count, every second counts. And that goes not just for our building, for anybody north of the tracks, you know, trying to get through. I mean, that is one thing that really concerns me. I mean, we do have people, we had a, a woman, actually one of my neighbors in apartment 10, who died because of presumably a massive heart attack. She died in her apartment, what was it, a week ago? So that's number one. Number two has, you know, I think they really need to look at the economic impact, impact of this with the coffee shop that's on 108 North, which does a good business. And, you know, whether or not that would put him out of business. Also Irving Gas Station, whether that would take away and cause more congestion? People coming in and out of Dunkin' Donuts, in and out of the bank, and in and out of Irving Gas Station all in the morning, which seems to happen a lot. So that would be a big problem that I see. Thirdly, the environmental impact, like you were saying, cars lined up to get through the drive-through. I've seen many Dunkin' Donuts, I've seen the lines that they have had. And the idling of all those cars there and the air pollution, the pollution to the land, you know, really needs to be considered. And from what I've seen, I originally come from New York. And one of the reasons I want to come to New Hampshire was the fact that all you have is chains. You walk down the street, there's McDonald's, there's Rite Aid, there's Duane Reade, there's Dunkin' Donuts. You go store after store, and that's what this town is going to look like. It's going to look like a street in New York with all it's going to be when you come in is looking like a chain. You know, and the other consideration I do have, which is not for the Planning Board, but for all the people of the town to be concerned about, since so many people have children here. And there has been a lot made recently medically of the issue of childhood obesity. It's bad enough we have a McDonald's there, now we're going to give them coffee and donuts to go with their McDonald's. I mean, that's really not in the interest of the families or the schools or anything, since getting junk food out of the hands of children is a big enough problem. And maybe if they do want to combine these lots to make one area, maybe something like a bookstore would be a lot more advantageous to the community, where you have people from UNH here, all the children that go to school here, Stratum Tech being nearby. That there could be a good business for that without the complete congestion. And it would serve something for the neighborhood as well.
Thank you. And any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, I close the public comment period. And I've written down a lot of notes, so I thank you all. Is there any other questions, comments from the board? We can start moving down Diane's.
I do, Rob.
Yeah.
I, I have two questions. One is, what's the, how usual is it for Dunkin' Donuts to team up with an office complex above it? Is that, can anybody answer that? Is that something that's common, not common? I know possibly of one in Greenland.
I don't, I don't know exactly how common it is, but I know the Dunkin' Donuts in Elliot also is, is associated with an office complex.
The other one is, is addressing, it was something I asked earlier on the previous application, was how this is going to connect to the condominium utilities and the capacity of those utilities. And a number of people mentioned this, the storm drainage, the sewer and the water, how that's going to be. I didn't see any of those plans, but.
Sewer water and utilities have all been stubbed off as part of the business park. Also, there's a, the storm drain is also stubbed off. Approximately 90, between 90, 95% of the lot will drain through this storm drain. Stormwater plan has been prepared and submitted. There is no increase in peak flow through 10 and 25-year storm. And so, so stormwater has been, has been closely looked at.
Do we, do we see those, or do we have those?
We do have a set of plans. One of the comments, Tobin Falwell took a very cursory look at the plans today. And he thought there was a need for more detailed information on utilities, such as the size of the sewer connection in the water main. And also, he wanted to see some invert elevations so that we could determine whether or not there was a need for more detailed sewer profiles for the project. And I believe many of these concerns will come up at the technical review level. And I would, that's one of my suggestions, is that we, if the board chooses to accept the application, that we form a, a subcommittee so that we can start honing in and looking at those technical details.
I'm sorry, Rob.
Yep. And, and what I was saying is, we can start running through Diane's notes to, about this plan. I, I think part of the notes is that this application does not seem at this point to be complete. So we might not accept the plan for review at this time until we see the, I see a couple pages of changes made. And then I would say we should appoint the technical review committee and work from there. So do you want to run through it, or do you want me to?
I'd be happy to. As you know, we have a application checklist that we use to review initially the applications to determine whether or not the applications are complete and therefore ready for review by the Planning Board and by the technical review committee. I have reviewed this application against that checklist. And there is a need for several revisions, not only to the plan, but to the application itself. And also, it highlights the need for some additional studies and coordination with various town committees. And of course, review by the technical review committee, as was mentioned earlier. Why don't I just run down the list? And if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Some of them are pretty basic and can be corrected without too much effort on the part of the applicant. First item is the legal owner of record of this property is the Cheney Property Management Corporation. And our application form includes an authorization from the owner, giving the applicant, in this case, Mr. Salimo and his engineer, authorization to speak on the owner's behalf with respect to the application. That needs to be correct, corrected on the application form. We need a signature from the Cheney Corporation on that. Item two, we need to see the scale of the plan in a graphic as well as a text form. Number three, the signature block should state that it's, will be approved, if it's approved, by the New Market Planning Board, and it should include a space for the signature and the date. The next item is concerning the survey boundary. One of the requirements of the site review regulations is that there be a survey boundary submitted as part of the site plan package, and that that be stamped by a licensed surveyor. And as we learned earlier this evening, there is a plan that has been developed by DUCET Survey, and that really should be either incorporated into the plan set for this project or referenced on the site plan application, so the two will go hand in hand. The next item is basically looking for frontage information that's missing on the new lot that's going to be created and which will be the, the lot for the new Dunkin' Donuts if approved.
Would that be on the plan at this point, because it's not approved?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons the engineer omitted it. But there should be some text added to the site plan explaining how this project ties to the other project and that it will meet the town's requirements for frontage and so forth. So that information should be added. The next item is just merely, there's a setback line that's shown on the plan, and it should be included in the legend for the site plan. The next item is fairly significant. We really don't have much detail on the outdoor lighting. As you know, a couple of years ago, there was a lighting amendment package put together, which provides guidelines to applicants before the Planning Board on what the town's expectations are with respect to lighting. And part of that guidance package requires that there be a photometric plan drawn up that shows what the light emissions are, what the coverage of lighting is on the site, and also if there's going to be any spillover of light on adjacent properties. And we would like to see that there be some kind of a plan put together so that we can have it be evaluated by our engineer to determine whether or not it meets those requirements. Also, the plan shows that the lighting will be tied into the lighting that's currently in existence in the business park. And it would be our recommendation that the lighting fixtures be more appropriate to the main, Main Street theme and be consistent with the design of the lighting along Route 108, which is a little more historically compatible, if you will, for that area. The next item concerns architectural and aesthetic review. We talked about that a little bit earlier. And it would be my recommendation that we do this architectural review and possibly consider setting up a subcommittee of a couple of Planning Board members and maybe bring some outside experts into the process, an architect or landscape architect, to, and coordinate that with the comments of the Advisory Heritage Committee to make sure those architectural details are being complied with. The next item is concerns roads, and we talked earlier about the need for a traffic impact study to be completed. At this point, we do not have that study. And it would be recommended that the plan not be accepted for, would not be finally accepted until such time as we have the traffic impact study in hand. And we also mentioned the need or interest in having our own engineer review that, the scoping for the traffic study and participate in future meetings that are being conducted by the Department of Transportation at the state level. The next item, you know, any of these items can be requested as waivers from the applicant. I didn't see that there were any specific waiver requests in the package, but as we go through the process, maybe it'll become clear what waivers might be necessary to, for the board to act upon. We talked about the utilities and the need for more detailed engineering data. Also, there are several or couple of retaining walls on the site that are greater than four feet in height. And those retaining walls need to be designed by a professional engineer, and those plans and details need to be stamped. And there's also a need to get copies of whatever permits have been filed with the Department of Transportation so that we can have those on file. Other concerns, and this is really a preliminary review based on what we have thus far for information. There's a couple of technical issues that I found. The dumpster that's located in the back of the lot is encroaching on the 10-foot buffer, which is required between the commercial property and the residential property next door. Obviously, that needs to be moved. I have some concerns about parking. Our parking requirements are merely based on a sit-down type of restaurant, and they call for one space per three seats. I don't feel that this restaurant standard really reflects the type of use that's being proposed here, which is a high-volume, high-turnover type use. So what I would suggest is that the technical review committee look at some different standards in other communities and also look at parking demands data from the. in other communities, and also, look at parking demands data from the parking generation study, which is put out by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, to determine if the parking that is shown on the plan is adequate. On snow removal, I think that question was answered tonight by the landscape architect regarding the materials that were selected for the, a buffer, and that they're of such a variety that they would withstand snow loads and any potential salt damage. Fencing is something I think the architectural review committee and the advisory committee would take a look at as part of their review, and see if what's being proposed is appropriate and compatible. On ADA compliance, I had a conversation this afternoon by the woman who is the accessibility coordinator for the Governor's Office on Disability, and they're more than willing and interested in looking at the site plan and giving us some feedback as to whether or not the plan meets ADA, Americans with Disabilities, requirements, and so I would recommend that we send the plans off to them for their review and comment, and that be incorporated into the technical review process. Bicycle accommodations should be provided on the plan, that's one of our requirements. And the last item that I have a concern about, and we raised this in the meeting, is that we have some beautiful natural features on that land, and it's unfortunate that what's being proposed now is going to basically disturb the entire site, and that we wouldn't be able to save those, those old large, old trees and, and the existing landscaping. And I would like to see some kind of a plan showing what's there currently in way of vegetation, and have the landscape architect and the engineer take a look at working up, working some of those elements, site elements into the overall plan, so that what we, what is resulting is something that will fit in to the character of the neighborhood better. So, given all of that, I would recommend that the, the acceptance hearing be continued to a date certain, our next meeting, September 11th, and this would give the applicant and his engineer and the other members of the design team an opportunity to address the outstanding planning issues. It would give them time to complete the traffic impact study, would give them time to meet with our advisory heritage committee and solicit feedback on some of the architectural concerns that were raised, and that we also have weigh-in on the project by our conservation commission. I do want to mention that we do have an engineering review proposal by Farwell Engineering, and I've made that proposal available to the applicant's engineer, and we'd like to have payment for those engineering services made in advance of the technical reviews committee starting its review, so that those funds will be available to pay the engineering bills when they come in. And last but not least, that prior to, the ten days before the next meeting, if that's going to be a feasible timeframe for the applicant, that these revised plans and details be submitted to the planning office for review by the public and for staff review, and that would be, you know, in anticipation and preparation for the next meeting.
Well, only other thing that I might add, and I'm not sure if you have it on here, is solicit comments from the heritage advisory committee before you.
Yep.
Oh, that is in there?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, my bad. Is there any other questions, comments from the board? Mike?
Would this application make for a good sidewalk, to better understand traffic concerns, existing landscaping that's there?
Definitely.
Yep.
You have to accept it before we do that, yes.
Right. So I think that that might be part of the package for next month, but maybe not at this time.
Although, would there be anything against any of us going down there, just to?
Yeah, you can't.
Can't do that.
Go on the private property unless you have landowner permission.
Well, no, that's what I mean, if you ask someone to just say, "Look, give me a better visual."
There's an RSA specifically saying public.
Typically, and maybe we need to revise our applications, but in other communities I've worked in, there's part of the application package that they have to get signed, authorizes the planning board or any of the town's agents to do a sidewalk of the property during the review process, so I'm sure the Cheney Corporation would have no problem in organizing or allowing us access to the property. I don't know if there's someone there who could speak to that.
I mean.
Lane is here. Lane Cheney. Would there be a problem with the planning board making arrangements with Cheney management to view the site before the next public meeting?
Yeah, no, we can make that work.
Okay.
I mean, I would prefer that we did it as a group rather than haphazard.
Yeah.
Eight of us go there and bother them.
I agree.
I don't mind if we try to schedule it with the landowner's permission now, but my opinion would be, let's wait until there's a application that we're, that we've accepted, but that's up to the board.
Yeah, that's good.
I, I just don't want to see eight people going out there at separate times, getting separate stories, so.
No, we kind of did that, never mind, we did it with enough.
Yeah, I'd like to not do that, as a, as a general rule of thumb.
But wouldn't it, wouldn't it be better for the board to have actually been on the site before we even accept, or, you know, I don't know.
I don't disagree with that, and we can set something up ahead of time.
You can see from the sidewalk, Judy's saying, yeah.
Either way.
Without accepting it at this present time.
Yeah, I mean, if we have landowner's permission, we can certainly do a sidewalk, but.
Well, you know what, we can just go on the sidewalk, that's public.
That's, that's what you'd have said.
And that's fine, too, and whatever you guys want to do, but, you know, I would prefer that we do it as a group together when we can, and that we do it as a official sidewalk, and, you know, that's, that's my preference.
I agree with that.
All right, and would that, would someone like to make a motion that we continue the acceptance hearing for this application to date certain of September 11th, 2007, to give the applicant, applicant an opportunity to address the issues pointed out by our planner in her review?
Should we ask the applicant of September 11th? There's a, there are a number of things that were here.
Right.
Should we ask the applicant if September 11th is appropriate, or should be?
Absolutely. Does that work for you, or would you prefer a later date?
Yes, we'd like to come back to 11th.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion by the board on that? The applicant, do you have any discussion on the motion?
Not at this time.
All right. And would that, please signify by saying aye if you'd like to continue the acceptance hearing to September 11th. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and those who abstain. Thank you. So we'll see you at our next meeting. And at this point, we're going to hop back to, yeah.
Do you want to generate this?
Oh, okay. I think I'd prefer to dispense this other one over to Jerry. Thanks for coming on, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You guys, did you?
Dispossessing.
Yeah, absolutely. You'll, you'll hear from Diane if, if we were to do that.
Thanks, Lane.
No, no, it's too early.
Well, they don't care about the rest of it.
Well, they don't care.
Are you crazy?
This is the part that's.
This is the cursory.
No, I think that was a good idea to, to come back.
If you're going to, if you're reconvening, we might ask Steve to stay.
Yeah, Steve, we're planning to reconvene to see.
Yeah, I'm hanging her up.
Just make it so.
Hang in here.
Steve knows how it works.
Thank you.
He hit it in the back quiet, I saw that. And whenever you're ready, you're, you're on, and I guess there's probably not much for you to say, but it's now to the board. My opinion would be at this time that we accept the plan and, pretty much, accept it and continue it to the next meeting, and that's, that's my opinion of the matter. Accepting the plan certainly doesn't approve it or validate it in any shape or form, it's just that we have jurisdiction over it.
I asked Steve a question.
Yep.
If the board accepts it this evening, and there's time delays with the other plan which requires extensions, are you, would you be inclined to also offer extensions that would be consistent with their timeframe?
Yeah, my client, as I mentioned in my earlier presentation, is, is under the end of the standing that this application and the previous application are tied together. So, we know that if there are time delays, that this application will also go by those time delays. Because the, the only question that I have is, are there any issues related to our application that we would need to address prior to the next hearing, except for the items listed, which.
You have the two waivers that you've submitted. I, did you have any concerns? No, I don't see any.
Sure easements or whatever.
Yeah, and that's, he, there, there are some easements, and he's going to do some research and.
Okay.
Get the, submit copies and get proper references put on the plan.
I have the references on the plan. You would like me to submit copies of the document as well?
Please.
And if there's other questions, comments from the board?
To the extent that we'll consider this part of the technical review.
Okay.
We should also set up a technical review committee.
Absolutely, all right. Diane points out to me that we have a memo from Dan Vincent, sort of addressing both of the plans that we've seen. Those will be reviewed as part of what I would consider the technical review committee, so I don't think a lot of them pertain particularly to this plan that we're talking about, but it should be noted that those were there, and we unfortunately didn't really touch them, but I think most of them were, were talked about quickly. And we need to set up a technical review committee for these applications as a whole, but I, we can do that now if we'd like to do.
Okay, or you can accept, you should accept it first.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry.
It's getting late.
It's getting late, it's been a long month, so.
It's only the 14th.
Exactly. I'll make the motion that we accept this plan before us tonight, and I don't think that we had any, I think we accept them as substantially complete, and we ask that the revisions that Diane had asked for be put onto the plans, but I think you've done most of those already.
Yes.
That's my motion, as disjointed as it might be. Did you have any opportunity to get that out? Awesome.
She's great.
She makes me sound good, too, when I read the minutes. I know, it sounds like a babbling buffoon.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, is there any comments, questions, discussion? All right, and if you're in favor of accepting the plan as we've seen with the recommendations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and those who abstain. Thank you, Steve.
Do you want to talk about waivers tonight, or we'll handle that at the next meeting?
We need to assign the technical review.
Yeah, we need to assign the technical review committee, and I would say let's at least run through the waivers quickly, whether we approve them or not. I would say let's hold off on approving them for now, and sort of try to keep it in conjunction with the other one.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to segment the plan up too much, sometimes when you see just a small section, you, you lose sight of the big plan, so.
Sure.
So I'd say let's run over them, but I'm not sure I want to get into them too much.
Okay, both of the waivers are requested for the same reason. One of them is for elevation contours, and the other is for hydroic soils, and the reasoning being that our application proposes no development. Obviously, the other application you saw tonight does, and I would expect that either they submitted that information or requested waivers.
I, yeah, I mean, I.
We have the topo information on the other plan.
Right, and I tend to think her.
I would recommend you approve them.
Okay. If someone wants to make a motion for the waivers, go for it.
They're pretty straightforward, unless the board wants more information.
Can an alternate make a, a motion?
Sure.
Oh, good. I make a motion to accept the waivers as stated with the condition that we verify that that the other, that they are covered in the other application.
I know they are.
Yeah, they are.
The only thing that's not is the soils, the hydroic soils data, but they have a certification in the plan that there are no wetlands according to a certified wetland scientist.
Can George make a motion as an alternate?
I don't think so. With all due respect, George.
No, everybody nodded their head and said, "Go ahead," so I.
Well, maybe somebody should echo his.
Unless he represents somebody. If he's substituted for.
Right, he's not substituted.
And before we get to that, I'm told that there's a question in the back, so I'll ask Mr. Michaud to step down for a minute, and we'll take some public comment.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know if you're already voting on it, this is what I guess I meant by running things through Town Hall. The question is, what you were going to vote on now is to okay the first half of what this whole meeting's were about today, right? To give them the okay to, to.
To join the lots.
Okay, so you've.
To accept it.
You've already went halfway, given them.
No, 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 we have not allowed them to combine lots. At this point, we've accepted jurisdiction over the application to join the lots. The lots are still separate, and we won't act on that application until the same time we act on the, the application that came after it. So we've just accepted jurisdiction, we're saying we.
Sometimes that's the same thing, approval and acceptance.
They're very different words.
Yeah, I worked thirty years in Washington DC.
That's your problem.
You can understand that.
I've seen, I've seen the best of them at it.
Mr. Michaud, and, and at this point, we're, we're talking about the waivers on this application, which are more or less, they're, they're covered by the other application, so.
Is there a motion?
I didn't hear, there wasn't a motion.
No.
George, George, George made a motion, but he doesn't tell. So if someone, someone would like to make George's motion again. George is non-motion, I'm sorry, it's like a non-meeting.
I move that.
This is a test to see if you guys listen.
I move that we accept the application subject to the verification of the waivers being included on the other application.
Wait, we already accepted the application.
We did accept the application.
We, we accepted the application, now we're.
Oh, we did.
Acting on the waivers.
That was my motion, stop stealing it. All right, so if someone wants to make a motion to accept the two waivers before us.
Accept them or approve them?
Approve them.
Grant them, grant them, use that word.
I'm going to grant the waivers intact, may for you four, Watts 11, 12, and 13.
All right.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion of the board? Seeing none, those in favor of granting the waivers presented before us, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And those who abstain. So six to one, motion carries. And at this time, I would say we should set up our technical review committee. Does anyone want to volunteer for this one?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're setting up a technical review committee on this one for, without having the other one accepted. I think they sort of go hand in hands. When you set up the tech, when you, the technical review committee sort of review both at the same time, once the other one's accepted.
Absolutely, the technical review committee, I think, is for both, but I think we can set it up now. It's an informal committee of the planning board, so.
Set up the committee now to date for it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Until they pay the bills.
Yeah.
And get the plans in.
So, I would just suggest that we have one in place so that we can move on. We also do have to set up a technical review committee for the.
That's right.
Select one application, but we can do that under other business.
Very, already met.
We did meet once, and we hadn't designated one, so I believe I was there, and were you there?
I was there.
You were there, okay.
He's doing volume.
But we should have a, a formal, we should have a formal technical review committee for that as well, so anyone who would like to volunteer, I know I'm already doing the other one, so I would like to not be considered on this one. I don't have that much time away from work. Janice?
Sure.
Janice? Anyone else? Judy? Mike?
I guess.
Judy, great.
Good, okay.
Janice, anyone else? Judy? Mike?
I guess.
Judy, great.
Good, okay.
And at this point, I would like to see a motion to continue this application to September eleventh.
Yes.
Do I hear such a motion?
Moved.
A second?
I'll second it.
Peter, is that a question or a second? Alright. Is there any discussion? And would that please signify that you'd like to continue this application to the September eleventh meeting by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And those who abstain?
And you would like to have revised material ten days prior, so September one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Alright.
We have appointments.
Yes.
Want me to go see the results here?
Yes, please, absolutely. At this time, the next, I believe we're in other business. I believe Jerry Hamel is outside, he's applied to be an alternate on the planning board. I think everyone should have his application. If you don't, let me know and I can pass it to you. I know Diane spoke to him today and asked him to be at the meeting tonight. And I believe that she got an informal oral request from the other applicants to remove their applications from consideration. So at this time, I'd say let's just relax until Diane and Jerry come. Unless someone else has other business. Yep.
Oh, what's the term is, I don't know, we'll have to ask them. What's George's term, I forgot. Are you, are you just a one year?
I'll bring that up.
One year.
The one thing that-
You get here first gets the opportunity.
Yeah, we were just wondering what, how the timeframe would be.
Okay, well, one second, while we're in other business, I had one thing that John had suggested that we bring up, and that be, we've been getting a lot of, I know I have, phone calls and other such things from media and other folks looking for information from the planning board, and I think that what, what would be the best for our board to do is, I think all calls should be directed through Diane's office, and probably if Diane can't deal with it, subsequently forwarded to me as chair and John in my absence, obviously. I, I think that it's something that we need to do just to, to ensure that we don't end up getting in trouble, or I believe at one point, there was a story out where people who weren't necessarily planning board members were commenting and being cited as planning board members, so.
Can I ask what these are asking about, or don't you want to say?
Just, it's just a variety of things. I mean, we've got several things that are before the planning board.
Yeah.
And my feeling is we should talk with one voice, that's it.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's sort of my idea with sticking with the sidewalks as a group, you know, I want to see this as, we're a board, we're not one individual.
Yep.
And certainly if, if the call comes to me, I, I won't be speaking as an individual, I'll be speaking as a board and certainly never interjecting my, my opinion into it. And I, I just think that it's a good course of action for us to take, and, and with the board's blessing, I think that's what, how we should go about doing things. I'm speaking about sort of the idea that John had suggested of speaking with one united voice when reporters or other people are calling, asking for-
Oh, yes.
Comments on, on proposed applications or applications. And obviously, there's been a lot of rumors going around, and, and there was a flurry of phone calls at that time to probably everyone, so that's the idea. And, yes, Peter?
Are you suggesting that any, any calls or questions that come to any one of us would refer to you?
Well, I, I think if it's, you know, if it's someone from the public saying, you know, "Hey, Peter, I have an opinion on this and I want to express it to you," by all means, that's for you to deal with, you're, you're an elected official for that. If it's a reporter asking, you know, "What's with this proposed development?" I, I think that we, you know, it goes through Diane's office, she's, she's the one who knows the deal, and if she thinks it's appropriate for one of us to speak to, she'll, she'll make that known. That's why we hire, I mean-
She, yeah, gets the big bucks.
Yeah, right.
Stand there, say, "Oh, he's going to be double thanked."
Alright. And, no Jerry?
I, yeah, he's gone.
Okay.
And we called him on the cell phone, so I don't know if you want to postpone it or discuss it.
Yeah, I'd say let's postpone it for now, give him a chance to come back if he wants to. I, I know he said he'd make an effort to be here, and you said he was here, we've probably ran a little further than, than we-
Well, he said he'd be here about eight-thirty and then he, we, we all saw him poke his head in the door and then he disappeared, so.
And we need to reconsider next time what, what position, which term?
And he didn't say.
I think then we specify.
That's a good question to ask him. I also wanted to-
Twenty-two years you're signed up for.
I also wanted the board to know that Mr. Pickering, who had also submitted an application, has asked that his name be withdrawn, and he actually had recommended Mr. Hamel as being a good candidate for the position, so.
Alright, and I asked if people had other business, and I go to Mike because he was very enthusiastic. I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Two questions, I think one will be relatively quick. Several meetings ago, Dan Vincent came to us with some issues. Violations on-
Yeah.
Conditions of approval. Do we have an update as to where we are with that?
Yeah, the reason they haven't come back to the board is that actually one of the property owners has moved forward with their plans, if you recall, there was a, a concern about, and I won't mention the location, that fencing hadn't been, and screening hadn't properly been installed around the dumpster, and the day after the meeting, the fencing contractor showed up, and according to what Dan tells me, the landscaper was out there this week, so I think that site is moving forward to compliance.
There's another site to look around.
There was, there were a couple of sites and, yeah, and Dan Vincent and I are, are scheduled to go out on Friday to visit one of the sites, it's hard not to, the, the coffee shop site on, off of Route 108, to talk directly to the tenant. We did have a meeting with the chairman of the NCDC, who actually owns the property, the NCDC does. However, the vi, they had already put the tenant on notice that there was a violation and that they needed to come back to the planning board and discuss it, and that was sent out over a year ago, and the owner basically, or the, the business owner, not the NCDC, but they basically ignored the letter, so we need to follow up with that. Also, we need to get some legal advice on, you know, how we should proceed with some of these citations in the future, and, you know, we're hoping that with the new town administrator, we might get some direction on possible ways that, that we should go, and I think we were kind of hoping that, you know, the new administrator might have some good input to share with us on this, so.
Yeah.
I have a question, Diane. As a matter of rules and regulations, who do we contact or who are we responsible for the non-compliance in the case of the leased property and the landlord responsible?
It's my understanding that you hold the prop, the property owner is legally responsible, and if the tenant isn't complying, then they can terminate the lease, there should be, you know, there should be some kind of language in their lease document that holds them to buy to, you know, town laws and so forth.
Through the, for the landlord, I would reapproach the landlord, this is going to be done, or we will close your tenant's business, or whatever Dan decides to do, or whatever Dan decides to do.
I'm not sure that, you know, that drastic of a measure would be taken here in New Market, because we try to, we try very hard to work with people, we recognize that, you know, there are extenuating circumstances and, but I believe that, you know, you could go through the court system to file an injunction to shut a business down if it was a serious violation, right, but I-
But some of these things are dragged on, but two and three, that's why Dan came to us.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think Dan was sort of at the breaking point with them, but hopefully this will be something that we'll see change now that we have some recourse.
Reiterate to Dan that we still are supporting him.
I mean, I, I think it's important that the board understand that this, the administration and the enforcement of the, the ordinances and so forth really is an administrative function, and typically, planning boards don't get involved in it, only to the extent that, you know, bringing things to the attention of staff and so forth. Because it really isn't part of the planning boards, and there's an exception to that, if there's not compliance with subdivisions or site review plans, then they can revoke those plans, but it's usually done administratively through the code enforcement office.
Just as a follow-up, I mean, I want to bring this up to a level, but some of these things border on, on health issues.
Yep.
Is there a health enforcement officer, or is that Dan?
Dan acts as the health officer for the town for issues such as restaurants and, and so forth. I believe there's inspectors through the state department of health and human services who come out and do health inspections. I don't really- Yes, it's written in his, his job description. He wears many hats, as you well know, yeah, he does. He's also the plumbing inspector and-
Electrical inspector.
Electrical inspector, and so he has pretty much a very, and the zoning administrator, so he has a very full plate.
The bad news is, I thought that was the easy one, so.
Well, you don't get to ask a second.
I have two things.
Okay, I'll try to be quick on this one, I, we, we just recently allowed a container storage business to open up in town, and I know in the past, we've approved temporary storage facilities to the term of a hundred and eighty days, I believe.
I thought it was sixty or ninety.
Is this, I, for some reason, I'm thinking a hundred and eighty, but I guess my question is there's, there's several containers that are not permanent structures that are in town now. Is, is that something that we should be looking at, or, or give Dan a heads up on it?
If it's, if it's an existing structure and it's been there longer than the hundred eighty days, then it's up to the building inspector to, or the code enforcement officer to, you know, ask them, request that they remove it from the site.
And you can-
Or, if, under extenuating circumstances, he can grant an extension for another, I think it's another ninety day period.
Does that have to come back to the board, or is that something the enforcement-
Well, that's something that, that's something that comes under the building code as opposed, unless, and there, there's always exceptions to this, if it's a project that has come into the planning board and there was a site plan, and, you know, there were certain restrictions placed on that site plan, and part of it included a storage container, and the applicant isn't meeting the terms of the site plan, then it can, the planning board could, you know, revoke the plan if, if it, and that's one of the enforcement methods that's available to the code enforcement officer to come back to the planning board and ask that be revoked. There's one incident, and I'm not sure if you're referring to it, but we've worked very closely with the property owner, and the agreement finally was reached that they would screen it from public view. And, and it was done as sort of an administrative manner.
Without coming back to the planning board.
Right, if the board feels strongly about it, we can have the applicant come back before the board. I think the net result of what was, you know, it actually is an improved situation, and I believe they really screened the, the storage container from the road. And, you know, I think Dan felt that that was a reasonable compromise and, and was willing to accept that. But if there's a concern, we can look at it, if you'd like us to.
Okay.
I think immediate concern should go to Dan first, and then, obviously, if it's a persistent concern, he'll bring it to us.
Okay.
My thought of how the process should run.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
Alright, other? Yep.
Two quick questions. When you bring back Mr. Hamel, I would suggest that you put him right into the public comment, so he, since he was sitting out there waiting.
How long, how long was he out there?
I don't know, you said you saw him.
I just saw him and then he disappeared. He said he was going to come in at eight-thirty, but we were right in the middle of a public hearing, and it just-
But my other quick question, under the capital improvement plan, who's ever on the budget committee for us? As a representative, I mean, on the, who's ever a planning board representative to the capital improvement plan? Okay, Peter. I have a concern about the storage facilities in New Market, and the reason being, as we've added some new buildings and apartments over the past few years, and condominium sites up off through the Bennett Way area and the Mill complex coming down the road, how current storage facility is upholding? And what is the, if maybe George Laney's the one to answer these questions?
Yeah.
To give us a, a, an update of when we, as a town, are going to have to face that problem, what the cost could be?
Well, that's actually mandated by EPA and the state, and it's my understanding that
I believe it was-
The town needs to take some kind of action by the year 2013, and that, you know, we're looking at some substantial costs down the road, and that has been discussed by the CIP committee. And, you know, they're, they're trying to develop a long-range plan for that, so that it won't be a major hit in any given year, that those costs can be spread out over time.
Especially where they're talking about the schools.
Yeah.
We have to keep that into fact, we have to keep what that cost could be, everything has to be integrated.
Well, and I think the, the idea of this-
When we plan projects, we know what's coming down.
Well, the idea of the CIP committee is to do exactly that, so it's budgeting out through several ten years on, on typical. To have a capital expenditure be budgeted out across those so that there's not one big hit, and I know that that was part of the plan, but George may be able to speak better to the current state of the facilities, but that's certainly not, George reports to the CIP committee that sort of thing, and then that's how they budget. So if he says, you know, instead of ten years, we have five years, the CIP committee then adjusts their budget so that this year, instead of the ten grand that they were planning, it'll be fifty grand, so.
I just want, we do have a sewer facility plan that was prepared by Underwood Engineers a couple of years back, and it does lay out, you know, a series of capital improvements so that, you know, the town will be prepared to, you know, address those issues. Of course, the technology could change, too, in that time period, but there is a plan in place, and George is working towards implementing that plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I spoke to Diane about the drainoff on impervent surfaces, especially in Bay Road. At the bottom of Bay Road, where Bryant Rock, so just below Bryant Rock, where you get the, the two, the two elevated areas coming down to one drain, Lamprey Road also, Lamprey Road Street, Lamprey Street. Whether, whether that drainoff is being treated, and due to the fact they just fixed the road, was there something done in regards to treating that runoff?
I can't speak to that.
And I need to-
I think that's something we gotta look into.
We need to put a call into Rick Malosky and get the most up-to-date information. It's my understanding that they are doing some drainage improvements on Lamprey Street, and there is a plan to reconstruct that area that was badly eroded during the flood adjacent to the Bryant Rock property, and I'm sure Rick can cast some information on what's being proposed there.
And I think we should, we should keep an eye on, also below the library, any, any of that amp with that coming off those impervent surfaces, which is, which at this point is just draining right into the Lamprey, upper Lamprey. I think that's going to be corrected. We should keep an eye on that.
Well, and I, I think that that's something that should certainly be looked at under the purview of the CIP committee, and that's a, a point that you can forward to Peter, who's my representative happily. To be considered as well.
Diane, will there be a, any kind of a meet and greet with the new town administrator?
I would certainly hope so. Nobody has mentioned anything, but when he comes on board, I'm sure he'll be coming around and meeting with the various departments, and I would be more than happy to mention that to him, and maybe we can have him-
If we will come, we'll revoke a statement.
At one of our-
Yeah.
Those people who we know.
We can have him come into a meeting and meet with us, so that he's aware of some of the issues that we're faced with.
George?
Yeah, alright, point of order, in, in la, in your last meeting, July tenth, you can, we can, like, well, I wasn't on the board at the time, but the selectwood was continued to this meeting. So if, since they weren't on the agenda, do we need to-
We're on the first agenda. I took, we got an extension of thirty days from them, and I took them-
For the public purposes, do we have to publicly continue it now so that there's no issue with-
Oh, oh, okay.
But it wasn't noticed on this, so we can't continue from this.
Well, you-
I think we need to re-notify the, but, that's my opinion. I feel nervous with keeping, to continue these meetings, I think that, you know, there's always somebody that's going to miss the- Yeah, I think that's- The meeting and the announcement, and I think it's always best to be on the safe side and notify everyone, so.[1796.94]
So, you.
So, the next time the application comes back before the Planning Board, we will re-notify all the abutters.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get clear on. Because actually, somebody.
Somebody came because they remembered that from the earlier meeting.
Right.
All right.
We need to. We got a couple of things.
Yep.
We need to set up the subcommittee, or the Technical Review Committee for the Selectwood.
Right.
And I will gladly be on that, and I think John's going to say that he wants to be on that.
Yes.
And George.
George. Well, we can't, we can't, well.
Oh, we can't have more than?
We can, but we have to, it technically becomes a meeting, and we have to.
I'll gladly step down for you, if you have interest.
So, George?
Good try. I know another technical. All right, yep.
Does everyone else finish? Mr. Cheney, who owns property at Two Elm Street, would like to come in and discuss with the board ideas that he has for possible resigning of that property. And he, they filed an application for a conceptual discussion with the board for the September 11th meeting. And we thought it might be helpful and advantageous if we could schedule a sidewalk. And he asked me to ask the board if you'd like to have a sidewalk of the property at 6 o'clock prior to that meeting, so that everybody will be familiar with the site and the neighborhood and the area, so that when it comes before the board for conceptual discussion, everybody will have that information in hand. And I told him that was slightly different than what we normally do, but I'd throw it out to the board and see what your thoughts were.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it might give us a good idea to, like people were pointing out today, it might give us a good visual picture in our head to continue on with the, with the site plan review from the.
What is, what is he thinking of doing?
I think we need to be careful that we don't. He's really not thinking of doing anything in particular. He wants to get ideas from the board. He's interested in seeing some kind of a increase in density to allow more units on the property, and possibly do some kind of mixed-use development, tying in the Brick Mill Agent's House into, you know, an overall development plan for the land.
I think.
And without noticing, and I, and I, I'm a little bit hesitant to give, without noticing this, and I'm a little bit hesitant to discuss anything in any more detail at this point.
But, but it would be a public meeting if we were to all go there.
If we were to go, then yes, we would advertise it as a public meeting, and we'd advertise it as a conceptual discussion slash sidewalk.
Well, would you have, would you put it on the agenda for 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
It would be noticed.
That addresses again. Four.
Two, it's two.
Across from the library. It's the big building across from the library.
Brick house.
Big brick house.
Is this the same property that the town Cheney just gave an easement for, for the town, to have some drainage issues from Elm Street coming down through? Because I called him for, for my veteran sign, and he mentioned that the town. Okay.
Wasn't that one approved, or?
It is, okay, thank you, Mike.
It was approved for eight units, townhouse development. They received a variance from the zoning board. It did go to the Planning Board, but they never, you know, exercised the plan. They never implemented the plan, so any, you know, further development there, we'd have to come back to the Planning Board for another site plan review.
Okay, so that kind of washed out?
At this point, he has a variance, and of course, the variance runs with the land. He's, wants to get input as to what the town and the Planning Board would like to see on the property. And just kind of left it as open as that.
Can we get the history of that whole plan?
I'll, I will research the records and have that information available for the, for the conceptual discussion. Yeah. The newbies here.
Because there was.
What's that?
For the newbies here.
There was some give-and-take stuff in there that I think we should know.
I think all of us are newbies to that plan, besides maybe Chad and George.
No, I don't recollect it, I do.
I do.
Oh.
That was a big thing.
I was on the board.
I wasn't on the board, but I remember all the discussions when it happened.
All right. Do we want to set up a sidewalk then? I would say we should have a motion as such.
Can I have a question? Wait a minute.
Yes.
Why can we do a sidewalk on this one beforehand? We can't do one at Dunkin' Donuts.
This is a conceptual discussion, a conceptual application.
You don't have to go on, I understand now.
And it's not legally binding or anything. And under the, under the terms of the law, you don't even have to notify the abutters, although I think it's always good to make sure the abutters are aware of what's going on, so we will do so. So, it's just conceptual.
It's a good idea to walk that.
All right.
Everyone except you, Peter.
I'll carry you, Peter. I'll give you a piggyback.
For you, it's a site roll.
We're still on the air, by the way, let's please.
Diane, you're going to get us the data and all that.
Absolutely.
All right. So, I'd like to at least have a motion to, to have a sidewalk on September 11th at the Cheney property. Someone, so move that?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, motion carries.
It'll be advertised as a conceptual discussion slash sidewalk.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you add something else?
Yes, I have two things. Just to remind everyone, the Office of Energy and Planning is having their land use planning conference on October 13th, and it's going to be at the Mountain Club on Loon Mountain. And it's always a good idea, if you're interested in attending, to get your registration in early so that you don't miss out on the good sessions. And the planning department has money in the budget to, for members to attend the session and pay the registration fee and any travel expenses. And if you're interested, please let me know, and we'll register for you.
And I would encourage, as I always have anyone, to go to that. I think Janice, John, Peter, and I went to the one in the spring, and I know I found it enormously helpful, I think others did.
I think that's it.
All right, and I think the one other thing of notice was you had passed out a thing about the municipal law lecture series.
Oh, I did?
Which, yeah.
I think Sue did.
In the mail.